Okay. It's seven o'clock. It's seven o'clock. We're good. Welcome to this meeting of the Bill and Planning Board. Let's see if the agenda says what number it is.
It does not.
It does not, all right. Well, this is, we're really moving along as far as meetings are concerned. So, our first agenda item is to determine when we're going to meet again. And I think that's going to be November 20th. But we're going to have a site walk on...
Fifteenth?
The fifteenth.
Right, yes.
Hold the phone, please.
Site walk. Nine AM.
Where?
November fifteenth, beginning at the Thayer Nursery and then going to properties on which the owner has requested that we...
We've heard from three so far.
Okay.
But we'll start at...
We're going to start it there and then we'll go to the other properties as requested by their owners.
To anticipate two hours there, one and a half hours.
We, what is going to happen at the site walk is we're going to walk around and people are going to point out features of the site. But they're not going to get to say, give their opinion of the feature. They simply say, "Look at that feature."
Right, there's no discussion...
There's no discussion of the feature. So, it should, it should move along.
Okay.
So, the fifteenth at nine at Thayer and then the twentieth at Talon Hall for our regularly scheduled meeting.
Right. So, those are our meetings. We're going to defer minutes. And now, we're going to do citizen speak. And any citizen who wants to speak to the board on a topic of interest is welcome to speak. We have an eight-minute limit. And, but, a lot can be put into eight minutes by a citizen if they... So, any citizens want to speak? All right. We're going to go on to the A and R plan.
This is 27 Garden Street.
Is that just given to us?
It was a packet of mine.
Oh, that was the one. Yeah, we got that one.
And this is the plan of land. Apparently, there were two lots, both of which were pre-1938. And they've basically reconfigured those two lots by a special permit. And whether or not they should have used a variance is, I think, immaterial because they would have been entitled to a variance as well, in my opinion. So...
Decision was made, Ned Gorklin, on behalf of the owners, applicants, the Kearns and the Dolan's. Kearns' own two lots is shown on the plan. Lots five, formerly were five and six on Garden Street. There's a dwelling at number, at lot five that the Kearns, John and Kearney and Rosemary handling. Plan is for their daughter and her husband to acquire what would be lot six and build a dwelling on that. Each of those lots is substandard by today's zoning. It requires 7,500 square feet of minimum lot size and 75 feet of frontage. But under the provisions of the bylaw, the Planning Board, the Board of Appeals is authorized to grant special permits for lots if they have at least 6,000 square feet and 60 feet of frontage. We redrew the lot to, as shown as lots five A and six A because, to avoid a variance for a setback, side yard setback of the existing dwelling. So, the Board of Appeals voted to grant special permit. It is still subject to appeal. The appeal runs out next week. But the, this has been a timely process and the parties are anxious to close on the transfer of the property, construction financing for new home. So, we would ask the board to approve and authorize endorsement of the plan upon the expiration of the appeal period. There was no, there was no objection to the, to the grant of the special permit. There was no opposition at the public hearing. They did their homework with the neighbors. The neighbors were comfortable. It's a very, it's one of these old subdivision, small lots type area. And people were happy to support the application. So, we would ask that the board authorize the endorsement soon after the appeal period is run so that they can close on the construction financing and commence construction before winter.
And actually, the neighbors supported this. So, the Board of Appeals has granted the special permit, saying this is fine. The plan says that we are endorsing it pursuant to the authority given by the special permit. And we will entertain a motion to authorize Mr. Clark to endorse his plan as not requiring subdivision approval upon the expiration of the appeal period.
Just ask one question before you so moved. Just a quick question. Ned, does this, does this meet the front yard setback?
It meets the front yard setback.
Okay, great. And I understand you're moving the line. So, it'll be a conform, this will be a conforming structure. Great, thanks.
So, is that a motion made?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Fine. So, that is that. Now, it seems to me that we should probably do the Falcone property next because I think that we can do that more quickly than the Thayer Nursery property. So, what we're doing with respect to the Falcone property is that they have an application with the Board of Appeals for a special permit. And if they get the special permit, they would come do the planning for it for site plan approval. But the Board of Appeals would determine the parking requirement. And I'm a little unclear as to just how much parking they're proposing. As you recall, on Central Avenue, the Central Avenue PUD said if you have a restaurant, one space for every two seats and then whatever you determine for the bar area. And we know that if you have a successful restaurant such as Steel &amp; Rye, that, that parking will not be adequate. But that's what the zoning provides. And Steel &amp; Rye also provides valet parking. But they provide a great deal of this valet parking in residential zones. So, that's a matter of concern. And the question is whether or not we should communicate with the Board of Appeals saying, "These are factors that need to be, that should be considered in your determination of the adequacy of parking." And I, further, it does seem to me that the Falcone application says we have an office building and that we're going to let the restaurant use some of the office building spaces. And of course, letting a restaurant use an office building spaces presumes that the space will be empty. So, that if you have a business that's open until eight, saying that the space is available when it actually probably won't be, isn't, it needs to be considered.
Sorry. So, just a question. Steel &amp; Rye, I wasn't on the planning board at the time when it was approved. Say, one for two is the bylaw. Steel &amp; Rye doesn't provide even close to that, correct?
I think that they, I think it was one seat for, one space for every two seats.
That they provide? How, no way.
What, what?
Was it one for four?
What was it?
It was one for four.
I think it was one for four.
In their front parking lot?
In the, in the top one, there are 27 spaces.
Okay.
The 27 and 29. Down below, there are 14, I believe.
Okay. But down below is also shared with the brokerage office?
Now.
Now, right. Yeah, okay. I mean, industry standard is really one for three plus some allowance for employee. So, one for two should be enough if they're able to meet it.
But that's, that's simply what is in the zoning.
Understand, understand.
And obviously, obviously, it wasn't used. The Board of Appeals presumably determined that the zoning was...
I'll have to go back and look. I don't remember.
Oh, well, that's in the PUD. They, they had the, it wasn't a PUD. So, they had the discretion. This isn't a PUD either.
They also had discretion because you, you changed the seating for the restaurant at Two Adams Street.
We did what?
You determined what the seating would be based on the new restaurant in Two Adams Street. And the restaurant came forward there for the special permit?
The proposed restaurant rather than the new restaurant since it...
But in any event, do we, does, did the, did the East Milton parking people weigh in on this yet? Bill?
I have a question on this. So, it says on the application that the restaurant will be able to use the Falcone Building parking lot at Four Franklin Street, which you mentioned earlier. Isn't Abbey Park using that for some of their parking? I'm just saying that if we're going to be asking the ZBA to look at parking, we should mention that. Because I can't remember. I thought that was the case, but I can't remember.
No, I, I mean, I think that the, they do use some of the Falcone buildings. It simply is that, East Milton, we've been told, has a serious parking problem. And it seems to me that parking is the major issue. I mean, obviously, the design of the building, since they're going to put a new roof on the building and windows in it, that will go a long way to curing the cavernous warehouse that it now is.
And we'll get to review that under site plan approval.
We, we get to do that. But if the parking is determined by the Board of Appeals, which it will be, before it comes to us on site plan approval, it does seem to me that we should, we should alert the Board of Appeals to some of the issues.
I think that's reasonable.
Will we know, will we have an opportunity to see the plan before we so alert the board? I mean, that, do we, I don't have a clear understanding of what they're proposing for parking, so...
It said 23 car spaces on the two abutting lots that they have. They'll be able to use the parking lot at the Falcone Building. It doesn't say how many spaces there.
That's always full anyways.
And...
The Falcone lot is always full?
And then, of course, part of it will be when they're going to actually serve food.
Here are their 23 spaces.
Yeah. If they're going to, for example, if they're going to serve lunch and dinner, then the parking considerations are going to be different than if they just served dinner. So, because obviously, lunchtime, they're going to be up against other uses of parking at the same time.
Well, as you recall, when we did Abbey Park, they said, "Oh, we won't have that many people for lunch, so we reduce the requirement."
Are they here? Because it would be helpful to know.
They're here. It would be helpful to have them.
All right, let's have them come up. Marion, Patrick, and...
Thank you.
Thank you very much for letting us say a few words because we can answer some of your questions.
Oh, good, excellent. I didn't realize you were back there, so...
It's not a public hearing. I understand. First of all, I want to give you a little bit more information that you can look at as we talk.
Is this yours, Alex?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of the application and the letter?
I would love a copy.
It's not, you know, generally similar to what you've just said. There's copies out there for everybody. We have brought you a drawing of the site plan in case you want to take a closer look at it. And these are copies of the parking at the Falcone Building.
Oh, okay, great, excellent.
So, it, because it shows you that there were 37 spaces, is that right?
Correct.
Thirty-nine, excuse me. Now, a couple of things. I think you understand this is an application for redevelopment of the old theater site. It's a space of about 10,680 square feet. The Falcone Company, Falcone LLC, has purchased two adjacent lots. Currently have houses on them. The houses will be removed and they're planning to build a parking lot in that space. And the parking lot will have 23 spaces. That would be right directly next to the restaurant. And it will also have protected enclosed space where you can put rubbish and pick up rubbish and make deliveries and that kind of thing. We have a tentative internal site plan if you're interested in what that looks like. I know that's not really what we're here for tonight, but I'm going to pass that around so you can just have. I think I'll address parking because that's really the principal concern. The Board of Appeals has to issue a special permit for parking for a restaurant used in a commercial district. And it's, it's a discretionary decision on the part of the Board of Appeals. But we now have three restaurants in Milton that have been before the Board of Appeals and have applied for approval for parking. There is no hard and fast rule because it depends on the site. It depends on the location. We all know that East Milton Square is a very busy place, especially during the rush hour. And of course, there's public parking, but we all know there's a lot of pressure on the public parking. So, what the Falcones have done is to, is to create a proposed design for the new restaurant, potentially 160-seat restaurant, including outdoor seating in the summer. In the winter, it would be a little less because there would be no outdoor seating. And they propose, of course, creating a new parking lot. But they also own an office building on Franklin Street and the parking lot there has 39 spaces. And they propose using those spaces after 6:00 PM, all the businesses close at 6:00 PM, for the restaurant. So, and I'll explain the Abbey Park situation in just a moment. But that's obviously an issue since in their previous permit, they were given tentative permission to use that lot on a lease basis. That would mean a total of 23 plus 39, is that right? Spaces dedicated to the use of the restaurant in the evening, owned by the owner of the building, which I think is, you know, maybe the best dedicated exclusive use parking for any restaurant so far. That doesn't mean that it's an easy question for the Board of Appeals because East Milton Square is busy. But I think that the Falcones have done here is to try to provide space that will only be for this restaurant and in, in a good quantity. In addition to that, they're, they are talking to other small business owners about providing, I, I think there's one possible, but I don't know whether it's something that, you know, I can give the name right now, but a few more spaces where employees would be able to park because it would be a little distant from the restaurant. Abbey Park has had a lease arrangement month to month. They are going to be using other parking if this restaurant is approved. And we'll be having to, I imagine that we're going to have to give some explanation of how that will work to the Board of Appeals. But Abbey Park, in their permit, has, I think, three locations that they talk about for parking. One is Citizens Bank. One is the Congregational Church, it's congregational. And the other one is this parking lot. And they had letters of intent for those locations at the time of their application.
But the, the church lot was eliminated because it's in a residential zone.
It's in the approval from the Board of Appeals.
Really?
Yes.
The Congregational Church denies that.
Well, it's in the permit. That's all I know. I mean, whatever the situation might be. If there is an issue there, then, then the management at Abbey Park is going to need to talk to us more about that. But that's the understanding we have right now is that they will, first of all, they have parking at Citizens Bank. Their lease is from Citizens Bank. And, you know, my understanding is that they also have other parking in addition to that. And they're an established restaurant and have people park, I'm sorry.
And Dolan Funeral Home.
Dolan Funeral Home as well.
When there's no funeral going on.
Right. But generally, funerals don't go on late at night when restaurants are open. So, I mean, I...
They usually, wakes usually go to late.
We're talking about what this restaurant will have. I realize it's an issue because there's another restaurant. They're working very closely together. There's even a possibility they may be under very related management. They're not, they're not trying to compete or put out of business each other. They're trying to work together. They both think that it would be a good arrangement to have two restaurants. Abbey Park frequently, it's difficult, it's difficult to get reservations at Abbey Park because it's very busy. And so, those are certainly good questions, though. And if there is a question about which lots Abbey Park has, will have access to, if they no longer have this lease, then that will have to be answered because they have a permit too and they have to continue to have adequate parking under this.
That was the question I was asking.
Maybe, let's see.
Could you speak a little bit to enforcement, both for Abbey Park or office parkers who are going to, I guess, need to leave the lot in order to make the spaces available or transient parking?
Businesses are not, businesses are not open after six. The lot is not used. In fact, it's, and the lot has always been only for Falcone. So, except for the lease to Abbey Park, that lot has never been a general use parking lot. People aren't accustomed to being able to just swing in there all the time.
But they do according to Ed.
Well, they do now because it's leased to Abbey Park.
Okay.
I, I do remember that before that happened, that lot was, I believe you had enforcement of the, of whether people parked there or not. So, the question is, how would you make sure, what? That it was still available to the restaurant all the time or that people were parking in those lots? I think you want to know, first of all, how will the restaurant assure itself that its patrons are parking in the proper lots? And I guess the best answer to that is any and all suggestions as to how to do it. But I think the restaurant may, it may be necessary for the restaurant to hire somebody to monitor parking. They will make use of valet parking if it helps within their own parking lot in order to make efficient use of the space. They talked to me about that and I said, "That's fine as long as you're not running a limousine around the square or something because that just takes up more space and people don't like it." Do you, I guess, I need to know what, what the issue is that's arising now in terms of, do you think Abbey Park patrons, see, they have a different parking arrangement because on-street parking was certainly considered. I remember when they made their application and they had dedicated space, they were going to have leased space, but into consideration also, the Board of Appeals took on-street parking. I think when we go to the Board of Appeals, we're going to be saying to them, "There's on-street parking, all right. There may even be more in the future. But we recognize that if there's a new restaurant, it has to have parking. And so, we're going to provide two parking lots and they're going to be for this restaurant only." And I, you know, if we need, if you needed to have even police enforcement, if it became an issue, I suppose you could do that. I don't know what...
I mean, my question on enforcement was really more, how do you enforce that there's availability for the restaurant patrons behind the office building so that the restaurant patrons aren't showing up to a full lot all the time? When you get there today to go to Abbey Park, it's often full and most people park across the street behind the other office building, which I don't think is actually allowed. But that's where most people go.
I think that's, isn't that...
That's Lou Falcone's, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Because Starbucks only has a few people at night.
I'm just, I'm just raising a question. I'm, I'm making a recommendation.
No, no, I completely understand.
And telling you that I think it's something that you're going to have to look at is making sure that that lot is available and isn't being used by people who aren't supposed to be in it.
Well, after six o'clock at night, there aren't that many people in East Milton Square that are doing business. They might go to the sub shop or, or, you know, the Chinese restaurant.
The real competition is going to be from Abbey Park or the office.
Right, it is. I think Marion may mention that Abbey Park probably is, you know, one of the ones that will be, they're in contention to run the restaurant this time.
Sure, understood, right.
I think part of the concern becomes if Abbey Park relied, and I don't remember the provisions because I didn't have a chance to check before this, but if Abbey Park relied in part on that lot in order to get sufficient parking for their permit, and then that no longer becomes available to them because you're going to use it, which is well within your right to do, does that then throw Abbey Park out of compliance with their permit? So, we just want to make sure that that doesn't happen from a legal perspective.
I think they have plenty at Citizens Bank.
Yeah, we've talked to that. And they do have citizens.
And that is on their, yeah, it's just to make sure that if they...
San Tander is open now.
Right. So, it's just to make sure that if they require, were required to have a certain amount from certain locations, that they don't get thrown into a bad position. So, if you're talking to each other, then that's perfect. That's great. Then you can make sure. Then that's fantastic.
We gotta doing that.
The Abbey Park permit runs to Abbey Park, I assume. It's not, it's not a restaurant permit for the space. It's just a picture of Abbey Park.
Yeah.
Does Abbey Park serve lunch?
Yes.
Are you going to serve lunch?
This new restaurant?
Yes, it'll be probably a little bit of lunch. But lunch is not even, they do less than a third of what they would do.
But you won't be able to use the spaces across the street if you're doing lunch. It'll be full of cars.
They've got spaces on Church Street.
Right.
Not too many.
They'll have their own. There'll be 23, 23 stalls, of which none of we employees.
Yeah, but on Saturday, you...
Saturdays, they have the whole lot. Our office building's not open on Saturday.
The whole square isn't on Saturday.
Days of the weekend.
And Sundays.
Lunch is, yeah, lunch will certainly, there's no question, the Board of Appeals is going to be talking about lunch. They're going to be looking at restaurant capacity. In addition to what I've told you tonight, we'll have to have numbers for the capacity demand for the office building during the day.
Right.
To know whether, because we haven't finished doing that calculation, to know how many spaces would potentially be available, if any, in that lot. We know there will be 23 spaces. But if there aren't enough or many to satisfy everybody in the second lot, then capacity at lunch could become a topic. And that's how it's regulated. And at least one of these restaurant permits that currently exists, the lunchtime capacity is limited to less than the dinnertime capacity. So, that's something that will continue to be discussed. It's a legitimate issue. Now, the other issue you're talking about, how do you make sure that the lot is available to the restaurant and hasn't been filled up by some other use, is a good question. And I'm glad you raised it tonight because we're going to have to study how, we can talk about how we would monitor that type of usage and make sure that the restaurant has the use of the lot and it isn't being used by other parkers. I prefer to say to you that we will, certainly, we can correspond with the planning board to let them know, but we probably need to talk about that because we haven't had a long conversation about it. Yeah.
I assume at lunch, because in the weekdays especially, at lunchtime, you couldn't have funeral parking in the new restaurant, proposed restaurant because it'd be too excessive.
You mean if, if someone wanted to have a funeral...
After a funeral, yeah.
Well, you couldn't have very, you know, it would be, the problem is that you would have to limit the size of the number of people you could have in the restaurant. So, funeral parking or any other, absolutely. And so, you know, if the, if the capacity for lunch is limited to a certain number, you can't exceed that just because you're having an event that draws more people. And that, you know, that's a compliance issue, but the, the restaurant should be monitoring that. It's an important issue because of the parking, the tightness of the parking situation in East Milton.
It's a huge concern for people in East Milton. So, the other concern, and I'm, I'm glad to see that has green space, but the other concern would of course be, were you maximizing parking so much that there wasn't provision for buffers from the street and from the neighbors? And it looks as though you've taken...
It's all buffered in this fence. It'll all be green.
So, so that would have been my next question. I'm glad to see that.
And that's what, there's the pictures of the, the top is the front. That's Adam Street.
Yep.
The middle one would be the rear facing the Starbucks. And that would be the outdoor dining section.
I was going to say, I was going to say outdoor dining.
There's three 18-foot doors there to open up the light. And then, the bottom one is actually the, facing the parking lot. That's, and you can see this reason there. So, there's very few, the windows are high. So, there'll be no, we've designed it so it's got very little impact on the neighborhood. And that building's solid. It's, they're in the jackhammer, no one can hear a thing.
I do know that from some of the other, and this isn't really parking, but it could be site plan review or something. I don't know. But from some of the other restaurants, they, at times, there may be, have been some issues about smells and, you know, ventilation. And our discussion has been, and the plan is to have absolutely the best, you know, state-of-the-art. You always say that, but I mean, it's really true. They, these systems have been improved. This will be a very good high-end restaurant. But it will have a kitchen and it will have to be ventilated. And the kitchen will be at the rear. So, the ventilation system will be designed so as to not emit anything that's obnoxious towards the rear property. that's obnoxious towards the rear property.
They're all filtered anyways. The new systems are totally done.
Yep.
And it'll be high, it'll be, it'll be, the roof is twenty-four feet high and everything will be on the roof.
Well, that will be an issue for site plan approval.
Yeah.
Yes.
As will the location.
But I've been, parking, parking is the, uh, is the item that the Board of Appeals is going to determine. And, uh, the question that we have is, should we, uh, express our interest that they determine it in a way that doesn't create problems for the area?
Mm-hmm. And that's our concern. We're trying. We've been in East Milton Square since the sixties. So we know the issues.
One of the only parking lots for a business.
We got, we took a building that was a wreck. That was garages and kids were in there, parties, and there were burglaries in there and there were stripping cars in there. And we took that building and cleaned that all up and opened the parking lot that was never there before. So it's not, we're not new to the town. We were born and raised here. So we do have concerns, so all that's, we're thinking of all that. So we're not doing, it's not a quick get going.
I, and we, we get it, but there's a tight situation-
Mm-hmm.
-in East Milton. In fact, there's a parking study that's going on about, uh, about the parking.
Yeah.
Well, the deck is supposed to be here too, which is gonna add forty to fifty spaces.
Leave that when we see it.
It's supposed to be this year. That's what Bill tells us.
Yeah.
Could you describe how deliveries and where they'll be?
Yeah, sure. It's right on there, the, uh, there's a delivery area. It comes into the back. Right in here where the dumpster is, this is a delivery door right here, delivery entrance. The proposal is, it's already actually there. It already exists in the building.
Where's the, the delivery trucks?
They come back right in here from Church Street. This is the one-way.
Sixteen-wheeler?
Um, I, I can't answer that. I don't know.
Obviously, it can't, it can't go in there. A sixteen-wheeler can't use that.
They can stay on Church Street and wheel it in if they had to, but that's where it's-
Church Street's the one-way.
Certainly not gonna, Church Street's the one-way, right.
Show me, show me how the sixteen-wheeler's gonna get to Church Street.
How it's gonna get to Church Street?
Yeah.
Well, one-way has no way, has no issue other than come around Bassett Street and up Church Street.
Okay, how about a sixteen-wheeler coming from, from the south? How's that gonna get to the restaurant?
Same way, it'll go down Franklin Street.
It'll go down, it'll go down to Franklin Street.
Same way Abbey Park gets there.
Okay, in the morning, Bassett Street in the morning sometimes is impassable with all the trucks at Bassett Street. It's impassable.
Well-
And you put a sixteen-wheeler on, on Church Street, it's gonna become impassable. And it's also gonna be coming in from Granite Place and Brackett Street and Granite Place. And those streets are thirty feet wide.
But bear in mind, Ed, that this is site plan approval, which we're going to have a public hearing.
Right, right.
It's a serious issue.
But it's something for them to address. Now, uh, we understand, should we, uh, outline to the board what we think perhaps they should consider?
You mean more specific than just take a good hard look at parking?
Well, we could just say we are concerned about parking and we hope that you take a good hard look at it.
Do you mind if I ask how many seats Abbey Park has today? Do you know by any chance?
I believe it's a hundred and- Hundred and, no, it's like a hundred and ten maybe, somewhere around a hundred.
And that, does that include downstairs, do you think?
Yeah, it does, yeah.
My, the reason I ask the question now is I'm wondering if, you know, they're proposing, by my calculation, they're proposing, uh, let's see, fifty, hundred and sixty seats, twenty which are seasonal, but we should count them. So they're coming up to a total of sixty-two spaces, which would be two and a half seats per parking space. So it seems that that would be, you know, it would be good if the Board of Appeals could look at what the overall capacity is if you combine the two restaurants using sort of that ratio. I just think it's a pretty good number. Could certainly ask them to look at it if the two per thousand, or excuse me, one, one space per two seats as well. It seems that they should look at it in, you know, sort of aggregate number of seats. Make sure they check the Abbey Pa- Park permit to make sure it's not going to be invalidated and-
When is your hearing?
It is the eighteenth of November. Abbey Park is permitted for a hundred and sixty seats and it was required to have forty parking spaces. Not saying that, you know, that's what they were permitted for. It doesn't mean they-
So that's fair enough. I mean, I guess, we shouldn't be necessarily elevating to what they, we shouldn't be elevating their requirement, but they should at least be able to meet the requirement they presented with, with, I think, a, a longer, you know, a document that's in place that says we have rights to these spaces, uh, not, not a month-to-month situation. So if it's one per four for, for Abbey Park, it can be one per, it should remain one per four, but they should be able to prove that they have the spaces.
Right, exactly. So, we just don't wanna-
I, I mean, it's, I, I don't think we necessarily wanna stop this, this proposal because it perhaps invalidates a different permit for a different, for a different restaurant. But at the same time, I think everybody at the table is working on the, on the basis that we don't wanna hurt Abbey Park here. That's part of your portfolio as well. So certainly we wanna make sure it's consistent.
The plan is for there to be adequate parking for both restaurants. And because Abbey has its own permit, we've already asked that question. We've gotten some answers. But you asked some other questions and we'll raise those. And we will be asked them by the Board of Appeals. You can guarantee it. They issued the other permit.
It's just making sure that we know what all the repercussions are as far as what's already been done and what's planned to be done.
The only point I, I would make is, um, it's in the commercial district.
Right.
It, it's, it's been vacant for a long time. The theater had perhaps two hundred and seventy-five people at night, but that was long ago. I remember it, but I don't know how many other people were around.
I remember.
And I loved it when the theater was there, but, um, East Milton Square's changed and there are different businesses there now and, and certainly restaurants bring traffic. However, a restaurant, a high-end restaurant, is a place where people come and they stay for a couple of hours. So it's not like a lot of small, there will continue to have the existing businesses that are in front, but it's not a lot of additional small businesses where people come and go and come and go. High volume of traffic. It's not a fitness center, although, you know, it's very successful, a fitness center. And it, it will bring something to the square. Abbey Park itself, the management feel that it will be good to have another restaurant. A different menu, different cuisine, an alternative. It'd be good for both places. And the way things are, these, this is what you usually see in, in small downtowns. You see some small shops, you see restaurants, small ones, fast food. But high-end restaurants like this, if they're not, if they're catering to us, you know, we're walking to them from wherever, if you live in East Milton, you walk to it and drive to it if you're further away. People in Milton do like to go to local restaurants. They're, they are an amenity for the town. We're finding that out. They also provide good revenue for the town because of the meals tax and also the increased tax value. So it, it isn't, without looking at other uses, that the Falcones have come up with this proposal. It's not because, oh, well, the only thing anyone ever does is a restaurant. It's because this seems to be the best use and, and from all perspectives, of this particular piece of property, which is a large, one-story vacant space with nice brick walls that can be made into an attractive space. Because, you know, we're, we're second in line after another big restaurant, though, this application does have to prove that the parking will work and work with the existing uses. So I think we're aware of that. We wanna make, we wanna make a good proposal and we want suggestions if there are improvements that need to be made, so.
I'm, I'm very happy with the use, speaking on behalf of myself. I, I think it's a great amenity for the town. I think it's a great improvement to East Milton Square, but I think we need to know that it's gonna work. This is a long-term use. We have to think about it on a ten-to-twenty-year impact basis. And you point out that from a traffic standpoint, the cars aren't coming and going, which, which helps with the transient traffic, but it also ties up parking spaces for one to two hours. Now, it's in the evening, so that's arguably a good thing. But we also have to remember how that's gonna impact us over the next ten to twenty years. So I think we just wanna make sure that it, it works.
Hopefully we'll have parking deck.
And we, and we know that you wanna make sure it works as well, because if you can't find a parking place, you're just gonna drive to the next restaurant.
Well, the success of Abbey Park and Steel and Rye show that there's absolute demand in this area for it, so.
I do think that valet is something that, you know, is something, especially, you know, with Abbey Park, is something that should be looked at pretty closely and certainly a good, certainly a good solution.
They have very few spaces.
Yeah, exactly. And they rely on valet. And I think it works well, so it's a, it should be looked at. I don't know. They, they take mine and it comes back, so that's all I have. Or nicer, or the other. Mike are better.
I just wanna mention, just for public information purposes, that, um, Falcones are having, um, a meeting for the public. There isn't, there's a notice you have in front of you. I think it's the night, it's the night before you're gonna do your site walk at, on Saturday. And it's going to be at the Art Center, which is the old East Milton Library Building. It's open to anyone who wants to come, from seven to nine. We'll have as much information as possible, but we really wanna hear questions and have some discussion with neighbors. So anyone who wants to come is invited.
Okay.
One last thing. We have also contracted with Howard's Dine too for a traffic study and a flow. So that'll be, hopefully he'll be at the Board of Appeals too.
Okay.
Thank you.
So is it general matter to the Board of Appeals that we are concerned with traffic and we would like them to look at it carefully? Basically, something along those lines.
Do you wanna be as specific as calling out ratios in our concerns? That we would like them to target a certain amount per seat?
Well, I, I mean, it does seem to me that the experience of Steel and Rye is something that they may wanna look at. And I don't think that we should necessarily say one in four is fine, if that's what we approved at Steel and Rye, because one in four isn't fine at Steel and Rye.
I'm not sure I specify specific ratios because they, they may consider that to be within their purview. But I would say that they should definitely look at Abbey Park's experience and Steel and Rye's experience and Eighty-Eight Warp Street's experience.
That seems a good idea.
And just extrapolate from that.
Great.
Can I make a quick comment?
Yeah.
I'm nearer butter to Steel and Rye.
Yeah.
There is no real issue down there with respect to-
Well, no, I'm simply saying that there's plenty of parking in the area, but, including the service zone. But as far as the parking spaces that they provide, it doesn't begin to satisfy the number of spaces that are used when it is operating.
And it is not unlike most of the commercial property in Milton, which don't have the space to provide any parking. So the history of the commercial development in Milton happened that the town provided free parking on the streets and the buildings basically took up most of the lots. That lot has a fair amount of parking. The parking's maximized, but they take advantage of a long stretch of roadway up and down.
Do indeed.
And it works.
And I understand, but East Milton has a parking study going on and, uh, they say that there is a parking issue. And so-
And that's East Milton and it's a different location. I'm speaking to Steel and Rye and the impact on my neighborhood and I don't see it.
Okay. Uh, thanks.
The Board of Appeals will have to make, I just, you know, based on their own discretion, but they'll want as much information as possible, so I really appreciate the plan.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. Thank you for coming. Made our conversation easier.
Okay, now, moving right along. We are going to do our technical review of the application of Fair Nursery under the landscaping, under the provision in article, article three A. I guess it's three N.
I think it's three K now, three A seven K.
Three A seven K?
Yeah.
Doesn't seem right.
Well, that's what it says here.
But that's what it says. That's what it says.
We need our new set of anything, right?
All right, in any event, we're going to, we're going to, landscaping business use.
Yes.
And, um, as you know, this is a fairly contentious matter and we don't want to start a public hearing until the board is satisfied that we have a full application to be acted on. Because if we don't, the board is going to have to basically wipe up. I mean, the idea here is that the nursery is supposed to give us a business plan showing how they're going to conduct their business. And the board is going to review it and determine if it's reasonable and meets the requirements in the zoning. And if it does, the board would be entitled to issue a special permit. And in reviewing this, there's supposed to be a little series of plans having to do with all kinds of, of different things, having to do with drainage and operations and parking and building and business activities and mitigation and lighting and street improvement and signs and rules and a firewood plan. And all these things are supposed to be, there's supposed to be a plan presented by which we can read it and say, "Aha, this is how you are going to conduct your business in this area." And we are going to determine if it seems reasonable. And if we do, we say, "Fine, you're, it seems reasonable." And if we don't, we say, "This doesn't seem reasonable." And, uh, so that was the-
Right.
The, the grand intent behind the zoning. And I see a couple of things in the application that we received. And the first one is that the Fair Nursery takes the position that it's a farm, and it may be a farm, but what the significance of its being a farm is, I'm not sure. What does being a farm entitle them to do exactly? And does it implicate in any way the proposed landscaping operations? Because if it does implicate the landscaping operations, we can control it. But if it's a separate activity, in other words, if they have a, set off a vegetable patch somewhere and raise vegetables and, uh, that would presumably be a farm activity that we wouldn't have to worry about. But if it does imp- possibly, possibly implicate landscaping, then we do. The other thing is that their nursery operates a nursery under a special permit. And, uh, this is fine. A nursery raises trees and shrubs and flowers and, uh, and sells them to customers. And the landscaping business takes, you know, says, "We'll plant those trees and flowers for you." And the nursery business seems to me to be, uh, not fairly removable or interchangeable. It has to be, it is so entwined with landscaping, landscaping business that to try and say, "Well, we're running a nursery business and a landscaping business." It seems to me that the landscaping business would have nursery operations, but they wouldn't be separate operations. In other words, the nursery, if it were to sell a tree to a customer, that might be a nursery operation. But if they sell it to a customer and then plant it, that might become a landscaping. And, and we can't have the building inspector running around trying to figure out what's what on this site. It has to be, I mean, that's what he's doing now. We've got all kinds of complaints that, uh, something is going on. And one of the defenses is, "Oh, this is a farm operation," or "This is a nursery operation." This isn't a landscaping operation. And that may be, but it is certainly not a, a good way to handle the matter. We really need something that's clear and specific and reasonable if we're to succeed in our effort. So, uh, it would have been helpful, I, I mean, they do, they introduce their, their, their application by saying they're a farm and by saying that they're a nursery. And then later on, they say that they are entitled to conduct farm operations and nursery operations without specifying what they are. And, uh, we- And we do need that specific. The other, the other thing that I noticed, just generally, is that the description of what they plan to do is very general and doesn't, you know, if you wanted to enforce it, they say, well, you know, we use the word primarily. And this is the exception that we're dealing in here. And if there's an exception to an activity, we need to know what that exception is. In other words.
Primarily is used on the parking plan, for starters, page four F.
Right. And, and the parking plan also, there's supposed to be a parking needs assessment.
Actual parking, yeah.
Which we didn't get. But I, I mean.
Yeah, they, they give the number of spaces, but they don't specify which are customer, which are.
They don't say how many they need, and they don't say how they're going to be used. And recently, the Board of Appeals had a, getting back to the nursery and landscaping business, there was a discussion about the use of trucks.
Right.
And apparently, there was some sort of interchange of trucks between the landscaping, between the nursery. And it seems to me that if you're operating trucks and you can use them in either business, clearly, they're going to be controlled by this permit.
Yeah, and another note on the trucks, we've been given the 2014 vehicle list, but the zoning requires the 2012 vehicle list, that if you, that all operations are to be at their 2012 levels. So we need the information at that level.
I see.
So, for example, there we go, seven D. And so, under seven D, for example, it has to be the 2012 for the vehicle list. There's a couple of other things that have to be as of 2012. And that, those levels aren't specified. So they need to be.
But going to A, the business activities, A says, we're conducting nursery.
Right.
And then, if you read it, you know, shrubs, flowers, trees, sod, selling these products, and the regular course of business. This, we, we can't, how do you write a permit saying, if you use this tree, if you plant this tree, you landscaped, and if you don't, you, you, you haven't? It does seem to me that where you've got a site, the same site, and it's a site that contains two houses too. So you have a residential use.
Right.
And then you've got a farming use, and you've got a nursery use. And if you're going to dump a landscaping use on top of that, you've got to, you've got to do some combination here. You just can't say these are all separate uses.
There needs to be a level of specificity as to which documents are governing which use. So farm's here, nursery's here, the nursery's here, the landscaping's here. Where's the overlap? And when there is overlap, what document is governing?
I mean, the, the loading area, for instance.
Yeah.
Is where they're going to load for landscaping as well as for nursery. It's going to be the same loading area, and it's going to be the same trucks. And they're going to be allocated, obviously, but how do you enforce that? It's, you enforce it by having the application be specific. And you get to, that would be A. A, you know, they describe what a nursery is, and they say, we are conducting a nursery. And it's easy to see in A that some of these activities could be landscaping activities. And how the casual observer would differentiate them is not explained. B is firewood sales. And apparently, there are eighteen wheelers that come in with a false bottom.
Live bottom.
A what?
A live bottom.
A live bottom trailer. And it just opens up, or they, they somehow get the, get the wood into the barn from this. They back in, and then there's a conveyor, and then all the wood gets piled up. And from the most recent hearing, it appears that when they load it, they back up a dump truck, and then they have a bobcat inside the, inside the building and scoop up the, the wood and put it in the dump truck and, and leave. And that's the loading. And, and the zoning requires specifics about the unloading and the loading. And this, the, the specifics here doesn't really say when they're going to bring it in, how much they're going to bring in, how many, how many dump trucks of wood are going to be taken out. I mean, there is supposed to be a limit on that, controlled by the 2012, 2012, I think it was.
Yeah.
Controlled by what went on in 2012. So we've, we've, we've got to know.
Yes.
The extent of what we're talking about here. I mean, if you have one of these big trucks coming in every day, that would be different than if you had one of these big trucks coming in every week. And as I say, it doesn't explain just how the delivery operations are going to be handled. Same is true with the, the Christmas tree, the Christmas sort of organization. It should be easy enough to describe how your Christmas sales are going to.
Well, in fact, Christmas sales are covered by three, Section three, four D, under the operations of the nursery or zoning, Section three, four D. So that there would be a question, I think, as to whether those should be in this special permit at all, given that they're covered.
Well, but it's S. If you look at four S.
Four S of which? Section three.
Christmas trees and holidays materials plan.
Oh, on that, yeah. But, but it's also covered on Section three, four D.
I understand.
So we need to.
But we're, we're simply saying the landscaping business can also conduct these sales. And then, if we're saying, oh, well, these are nursery sales, therefore, we can have amplified music and Santa Claus.
Right. It goes back to your question on specificity of operations.
It, it, it doesn't, and, yeah. So they, that C needs to be, needs to be worked on.
And the, the other thing, just sorry to interrupt, Alex, but to that point, there's mention of sales, Christmas sales elsewhere in here. So on page eight, number three. So one of the problems in going through this application is that not everything is grouped together. So that you see one provision in one area and one provision in another area, and all of the information on a specific item should be together. It'd actually be helpful if it followed the zoning. So we can just say, okay, four A, four A, four B, four B, et cetera, et cetera, rather than having to jump through the document to find where the different provisions are. Because it makes it hard to tell if we actually have the full information.
Right. I mean, B is firewood sales, and K is firewood plan.
Exactly. So they need to, this needs to be organized so that we are, we can be confident that we have all the information that the zoning requires.
D is, is, explains landscaping, and I, I think that's fine. I, I, I read it. I, I guess that is a definition of landscaping. But what it's doing here is, I'm not quite sure. It should be.
Back to organization.
It should be organization, I think. Snow and ice removal. Fair Nursery shall provide snow and ice plowing and removal services. They're seasonal. We really need some specifics and procedures because the zoning says that this plan shall show the specifics of and procedures for snow plowing and snow and ice removal service is, including safe and reasonably quiet equipping, loading, and dispatch of trucks, and onsite activities, necessary provision of the services, including storage of equipment and materials, which would include the plow blades and, and, you know, the trucks. But we require something, and, and, you know, what the response is, is two sentences, which is significantly shorter than the statement of what we require. Now, do we, wait, we, I'm getting to the existing conditions plan.
Yep.
And I've got two plans.
Yes.
Two plans, and.
Do we have an extra one? Do you have an extra plan? Don't bother me, I'm all right.
Here it is. Here it is. It, it seems to me we need a plan of the other lot on Hillside Street.
Yeah, we have two. We have existing conditions, marked two seventy Hillside, and then we have proposed conditions for two seventy Hillside.
They've got two different lots, though.
But they have two different lots.
What they're using in this business. So both lots should be.
Right.
Should be covered. And of course, as, if you read this, it, it talks about Lot one A and one C. And I, I haven't quite been able to figure out where these lots are shown.
They're marked. I think one thing that's interesting about both the existing conditions and the proposed conditions is that there's so much information on both of them that they can be difficult to read. So, for example, proposed conditions, some of the dimensional markings are obscured by the landscape. So if they could be broken out, so we could see, here's the landscape plan, here's the lighting plan. We, we received this from other groups, and it makes it easier to read when the information is not being obscured by a different, additional information. But you're right, I don't, I don't see the lots.
Right.
Noted on here.
I, I see some, you see these dotted lines, and they probably have to do, but they don't, they don't.
But it doesn't specify. Well, some of them are certainly topographical lines.
These here.
Those there. But it's the same, it's the same, you see what I mean? It's the same number, same type of dashes, so.
I, I understand that.
Right.
The, I know that in, in some periods of, of rain, that the water comes sweeping over the lot and pours over the wall on, washes down Hillside Street into the storm drain. And this plan shows a, a swale or a three-foot drainage swale only along the, well, parallel to Hillside Street, but on the other side of the lot. And it does seem to me that drainage, drainage is.
Four D.
This plan shall show provisions for drainage and drainage infrastructure for the effective control of stormwater. I mean, I have observed stormwater pouring off that, that site, and it does seem to me that these drainage, these drainage, the, the swale with the dry well at the end may not be sufficient, may not be sufficient drainage.
Yeah, typically, when we receive drainage plans, we receive the cross-section detail of the drainage structures, and that's not included in here, so.
The drainage plan really needs to be, at least identifies what the drainage issues may be, and then shows how that it's addressed. Because people are undoubtedly going to, they've already raised drainage issues, and if they're not addressed here, it means that we have to, we have to figure out what the issues are and how to address them.
I'm curious, as to the location of this well. If you look at the topography, it's at the top of the hill.
Right.
Well, so the site slopes down towards Hillside.
It may not be the best place for the swale.
Seems like it might be at the wrong end of the property.
Well, and that's.
I may be reading the topo wrong, but I, I don't think I am.
Well, and that's again why we need the, the typical details that we would normally get with the drainage, just so we can evaluate what's being proposed versus the effectiveness. But, and that request for details goes to other things. For example, the material bins are described, but normally, we would expect to see actual drawings of the, the structures as part of the plans that were given. Same thing for a lighting plan. We'd expect to see foot candles throughout the site, so we can judge how much is, how much lighting is happening where. So it goes back to the level of specificity that's missing from this application.
Well, on lighting, just one thing. The, the, the plan shall show all exterior lighting, which shall be designed to provide reasonably necessary lighting. Spill light level shall be low. But here, we've got some thousand, thousand watt flood lamps. So we have to be sure that these, I mean, if these are necessary, they have to be shown to be necessary to begin with, and then they have to be shown as not lighting up the whole.
Well, that's where we need the lighting plan.
Right.
And here's where the foot candles are, and here's what the structure looks like. I think the, the heights range from eight to twenty-five feet, but there's no, there's no specificity as to which, this is on page six, which items are at which height, and so that needs to be specified as well. Again, a typical lighting plan is what's required with the normal details that you would find on a, on a lighting plan. So type of light, where it's located, how many foot candles, et cetera. We're also missing the copies of the deeds and the leases. We have, we have the list of them, but we don't have, at least it wasn't in my packet, maybe it's in somebody else's, the actual deeds and leases.
Yeah. What else you have going up to page seven?
Up to page seven.
Through page seven.
Through page seven. Let's see, again, details on the, the storage and the dumpsters. For example, on page six, number nine, the recyclable compost pot, plot, it talks about a two-sided enclosed area containing four hundred and seventy square feet. But when you look at it on the plan, it's only, it's marked as a hundred square feet, so that needs to be clarified to make sure that we know exactly what's going where. We've talked about the lighting plan. The signage plan, of course, we don't have authority over signage, and they do show the locations of the signs, so, which is all that we requested on that. Vehicles and heavy equipment, there's, there's quite a, quite a bit missing from that section. One is, of course, it's supposed to be the 2012 list of vehicles, and then compared, obviously, to the 2014, but the zoning requires 2012. There's a list of rules that we required relative to the operation of the vehicles. The statement here says that.
And, and the operation of the employees.
Well, yes, and how the employees operate those. But for example, there's a statement here that says, backup horns on vehicles shall be maintained at the lowest level permissible by OSHA. We need to know what that level is so that the permit can be properly enforced. Firewood plan, we've talked about a little bit already, but I note that we require that the delivery times be in here, and they're not, storage of.
Sorry, can we just go back for a minute?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I would just, on the vehicles, I mean, I think I would just be, I don't want to be, I don't want to be overly. be, I don't want to be overly critical. I will, I mean, I think saying that something's maintained at the lowest level permissible by OSHA, that's a, that's a potential thing that's going to vary over time, I would guess.
But it would be helpful to know what that is.
And what does OSHA, yeah, I mean, does OSHA require anything?
Yeah.
Maybe OSHA doesn't require...
I'm sorry, is that what...
It's actually in...
Let me back up for a second. Are they replicating the language that's in this? I didn't compare that, so...
Let me pull it up.
On vehicles, I don't think we mentioned...
So it's not mentioned, okay. Okay, fair enough.
I don't think we mentioned OSHA. So if it's going to be mentioned, then it needs to be, I mean, it's actually for their own protection, because you want to have in the permit, you want to have the amounts that we're going to hold them to, so that when somebody comes and says, hey, I think it's over that, it can be easily tested and said, no, actually, it's exactly our amount.
So if they had suggested that it was lowest level permissible by OSHA in section such and such, would that be sufficient? Or do you want to actually see the decimal number, decimal?
I think, I think having the decimal number in the plan would be helpful to them.
But how, you measure decibels at the edge of the...
If we're going to get that specific, then we...
I'm asking the question so that they can have the feedback.
Right.
I think, I would be a little concerned about having that level of specificity, especially if the OSHA level has the potential to go up over time. I would want this plan to continue to follow that guideline.
So what we have in here is backup horns on vehicles used on site, this is in the zoning itself, shall be modulated to the minimum level deemed permissible by applicable law. So they've put in OSHA as the applicable law.
As the applicable law.
I don't have a problem with that. If it's a different applicable law, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just saying, we should state what that is so that there's no question on that going forward. So you don't want people saying, you don't want people saying, well, the standard in this year is X, and we're holding you to that, when, when we wrote the permit, the standard was Y.
That's, we're saying, so you and I are saying the same thing.
Yes, we're saying the same thing.
It needs to be, it needs to allow for adjustment over time. As OSHA changes, so should the operation of the company be able to change to meet OSHA, because otherwise, they've got a huge conflict that they can't...
And then we can put that into, if, you know, if they, if we deem that we can grant the special permit, then we can put that in. But we have to have that level of specificity in there so that everybody is clear what the requirement is. And if it is, you know, if it's OSHA, if what the specificity is, is it's OSHA regulation XYZ, then that's what we put in there. I'm just saying it should be more specific than the OSHA regulation.
You answered my question right there.
I answered your question.
We should know what...
You want them to reference the section of OSHA.
Yeah, I think that would make sense.
Right, and we, yeah. And, and you know, would be, obviously, in a perfect world, if we had a decibels as measured on the lot line.
Right.
That would be, that would be...
That could also be useful.
That would be a pretty good standard.
Just whatever standard we have has to be specific enough to be useful, is all I'm saying.
Right, and it has to be, it has to be functional. The storage of fertilizers, they basically say you can store it all over the place, which I guess is, as long as they store it carefully, is okay.
Well, it's not supposed to be stored within 35 feet of the lot line, which they mention in here.
Yeah.
At least, as I said, at least one of the dimensions was obscured on the plan by something else, so it looks as though the plan is currently compliant with that, but I can't tell for sure, which is why it'd be helpful to have clearer plans.
The operations of the property is similar to the problem I brought up, is basically they cite the law on farms, and they cite the, the special permit for a nursery, and...
So Alex, to that, to that end, when they're, when they're revising their plans or giving more specifics on the plans, perhaps it would be helpful to identify areas that are farm only, areas that are landscaping only, and areas that are shared by the two. And under the areas that are shared by the two, I assume you would apply the more stringent standard?
Well, I've been...
Is that what we're looking for here?
We're not, we're not necessarily applying more stringent standards. What we're doing is doing a special permit for a landscaping business. And if the landscaping business, if the nursery operations can fall under the purview of the landscaping operations, then we can control them. And if they can establish that there are separate operations and never the twain shall cross their paths, either as to a farm or as a nursery, then they can, they can say, we don't want these control, these particular activities. But they have to say what they are. We have to know what, what's...
Well, and they have to locate those activities on the plan, I assume.
Well, they should, they should say, I mean, if it, if it, if all the activities are occurring all over the lot, the same lot, you know, residential, farm, landscaping, nursery, then we've got, we've got...
It's going to be interesting.
Then it, but we've got to know, we've got to know, they've got to, they've got to specify.
I agree.
On this page eight, under operations, there's, there are a couple of things. On number three and number six, we have if Christmas activity, last line on three is, if Christmas activities occur outside of these hours, the operators will maintain a log stating the type, time of activity and the reason for activity. And under six, we have the same thing for dumpster.
And we have...
But if you look at the zoning, it only allows it for deliveries. So we have deliveries to the business premises, under E on the zoning. Hang on, I'll tell you which E, because there, I think there are two of them. Under 7E, so requirements for a landscaping business use onsite traffic, loading, and deliveries. We have, for deliveries to the business premises, we have, with respect to any deliveries made outside of these hours, the operator shall maintain a log available for public inspection stating the type, type and time of delivery, delivery, and the reason why it was made out of hours. However, that option was not given for either sales of Christmas and holiday items or movement of, emptying of dumpsters. So if we allow it, that's one thing, but that we did not give that option in the zoning, that, that activities could happen outside of the stated time of the zoning.
And of course, the option is meaningless unless there's some oomph behind it. I mean, it's easy to take a log. We had 15 deliveries after hours today.
Right.
At 3:00, 3:15, 3:30, 3:45. What's the consequence of this? I've been keeping the log, I mean, the, the truck deliveries, it was meant to, basically, at the time of renewal, if there was a lot of this stuff that had been going on...
Right.
That we, we could revisit.
It was a look back.
A look back provision. But I'm not sure that...
But on, on the zoning, it's clear that Christmas and holiday sales are to take place during a certain time between certain dates. There was no provision made for Christmas and holiday sales being allowed outside of those times and dates. Dumpsters should occur at certain times, certain days of the week. So we just need to be aware of that, that there were some flexibility allowed, or some requirements allowed on some sets of activities, but not on others.
I think that's right. But I, and where it's not allowed, it shouldn't be asked for. But the, you know, the Christmas activities should be described as well as they can do it.
Well, and I think that was partly done, another part, there was another part of the, the application that has Christmas activities. They need to be all put together. On details on page nine, number two, we have the eight-foot pressure-treated fence with six-by-six posts, eight feet on center, with sound attenuation material, but the material itself is not described. So we'll, that's another one of those items we'll need additional specificity on.
Well, I mean, it seems to me that the fences, the sound attenuation fences are going to be a significant issue.
Yeah.
Cross-section or something?
Yeah, cross-section, details, materials, yeah.
And we're going to, I mean, we can go out and figure it out, but if they have a proposal and they know what they, what they propose to put up, and they have the specifications for what they propose to put up, then that would be useful. As far as, it would be very useful. We'd want to sort of know about the bins.
Yes, yeah, the details on the bins.
Yeah.
What they're constructed with. They're also going to replace the stone driveway, which is hard-packed, with the soft compost loam mix. We'll probably want some additional details on that.
The, the, the traffic plan, as you can see, the only real traffic plan is the arrows indicating that, that going around back of the barn, the wood barn.
Right, that's the one-way traffic pattern.
That's the sort of one-way traffic pattern. But we do want that operations plan sort of indicating that we can, we're not going to be using these bobcats just for fun to take people on rides around the, or take them out to look. They're going to be used for business purposes, and hopefully, that can be described, because bobcats are, are pretty noisy. And if they're going to be used for loading wood, it might be useful to know just how loud that's going to be. Because the barn is probably a metal structure, which...
Barn's wood, I think.
A wood structure.
Wood structure, yeah.
But I don't know how, how sound attenuating it is for, if a bobcat is...
It's working inside.
Working inside loading wood. Whether or not that amplifies the sound or reduces that, I'm just not sure. And the sprinklers of, where, I mean, this, I'm glad there are sprinklers, but we should...
Well, it's, it's, you're looking at number nine, and used to be contained dust as necessary.
Well, in 13.
And we talked about this in 13. But the as necessary becomes a question of...
When is it necessary?
How do you determine that so that it can be regulated? Yeah.
And I guess the question of the delivery truck traffic. There's been enough time that's gone on to know whether there's a problem of trucks not staying on the road. And if there is a problem, we need a solution.
Right. So we, when it says shall make necessary improvements, we need to know what those improvements are.
Well, they should can say there's no problem. What else do you have?
That takes us to the last page. I think it covers most of the main issues.
It is, you know, it's a lot of repetition. What we've said is a lot of repetition, making the same points in different contexts. And there's no point in having a hearing until we've got some reasonably specific matters on which to conduct the hearing, because...
Well, the complete application. We need a complete application before we can conduct the hearing.
Meeting the requirements of the zoning.
Yeah.
And I think Mr. Chalkren understands the zoning, and, and can, I, we're available to, to consult if question arises, questions arise as to the application itself and whether something is specific enough. But eventually, when we have a complete application, then we're going to, we're going to have a public hearing.
Right.
And the public hearing will go through it all again. What else do we have?
I think you've done a good job.
I think that's our tactical review in a nutshell.
I think it is.
Big nutshell.
You know, if, if we get the, when we get the complete application, I'm happy to go through it again, and just to double-check that it meets the requirements, and then once we know, we can schedule that public hearing.
Yeah.
But we know what happens when we have a public hearing on an incomplete application.
Oh, we do it, it just...
Makes our lives easier to have it done right.
It's just much more expensive than it would have been than, than if the application had met all requirements to begin with. So, their nursery, back to the drawing boards, please. And, well, now, this is not a public hearing, but I will answer the question, a question.
Well, it's just a question about the site visit. You're calling it a site visit, but I'm hoping that it will also be a noise visit, so you can hear the bobcats as well.
If, if there are bobcats operating, certainly, we will be able to hear them.
That's a huge issue, not just walking around, listening, um, nice and neat everything, but I mean, the noise is quite, so I just want to specify, and that's just being, but also hearing cats as well.
All right. That, that concludes this part of our meeting. Now, if we have the town planner, we could have the town planner's report.
He is downstairs at another meeting.
He's downstairs on 131 Elliott Street.
That's right.
But we don't have the town planner, so I guess we will...
I could give you a master plan update. Would you like a master plan update?
Oh, I'll just have the master plan update.
Okay, so as you all know, town meeting voted, very quick, town meeting voted to, to approve the implementation committee, so that will be going forward. And I am meeting with Daphne next week, and we'll know a deadline for when we submit the final plan to you after that. And then at some point, we'll have a vote. And then I would be happy to accept the explanation.
All right, thank you, Ed. All in favor?
Aye.
Your turn.